We'll call this meeting to order of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Chester? Mr. Cho? McLoughlin? Mr. Risch?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Warren Brown?
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Okay, we have a quorum. Has anybody looked at the minutes? Was that March?
As-
February 21st?
As Chair Welch is not available to be here tonight, we need to have an acting chair. So if somebody would be able to make a nomination in a second-
I move that Mr. Warren Brown be acting chair for tonight.
I second that.
You, Adam and Nancy. Please carry on, Chair Warren Brown.
Okay. I guess, were there any additions or corrections to the February 21st, 2024 regular meeting?
No, and I move that the meeting minutes be approved as written.
For a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All those minutes are approved. Do we have any written communications?
There was an email included in the packet from Joanne Buddy regarding questions about zoning board of appeals bylaws and how abstentions are treated, and suggestions that we make sure that, or you know, review the bylaws and make sure that the bylaws are clear on how abstentions are treated as they are treated different ways by different boards and commissions. And I will let you know that even before this came up, you know, the Community Development Services Department has been reviewing their different boards and commissions bylaws and looking at revisions to them. And we kind of put that on hold while we got a new city attorney appointed, which happened last week. And they will be asked to review all of the boards and commissions bylaws to make them as consistent as possible, given the fact that different boards and commissions have different authorities granted to them. Because like ZBA is a quasi judicial board, whereas others are advisory. So they get, they operate differently. But we're trying, going to try and make them as consistent as possible.
Okay. Any continued public hearings?
No continued hearings.
Okay, so that should bring us to new business. And we have a minor ordinance, ZBA 2024 Minor 02, a request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Alejandro and Simona Yurisbeuti for minor variance to allow building addition that would encroach five feet into the required 25-foot front yard at 902 East Main Street in the R3 single and two-family residential zoning district. Could we have, well, let's see, let me first of all, anybody in the audience who may speak here tonight? If you'd stand up and raise your right hand, and I'd like to swear you in, please. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give will be truthful and to the best of your knowledge? Thank you. Okay, Marcus, go ahead, please, thank you.
We are going to be talking about a minor variance request at 902 East Main Street. This is to reduce the required front yard along East Main Street at 902 East Main from 25 feet to 20 feet to allow construction of a building addition of the same general size and in the same general location as the existing front porch. The board may approve the request, approve it with conditions or deny the request. The board should either accept the specific staff findings or articulate their own specific findings based on that application's criteria. Staff do not have a recommendation regarding this request. The existing principal structure on the site was built in 1880. It has an eight-foot deep open porch that runs the length of the front of the house. This open porch legally encroaches into the required 25-foot front yard. The zoning ordinance allows open porches to encroach into a front yard up to five feet, but no closer than five feet to a property line. Applicants added a rear deck and pool room on the north side of the room in sometime between 2017 and 2020, and a 12-foot by 18-foot sunroom on the west side of the home in 2022. You can see that sunroom over here on the left. The property is located at the northeast corner of East Main Street and North Lynn Street. The yellow blocks are residential uses. The red blocks are business uses. We have a park down here, I think Victory Park at the southeast corner of the area. Zoning-wise, all the oranges are three single and two-family residential. This darker red is B3, general business. This is a veterinary hospital. This is a convenience store directly to the west. And then we've got HVAC and air conditioning facility. And then I think it is Piato Catering is further west off-site. And then directly across the street is B1 neighborhood business. That's secondhand rose. We have, I think, an R5 multifamily residential across the street. And then we have the park to the southeast. As far as the future land use designations go from the comprehensive plan, this entire area is future land use designated for residential with a park use, you know, reflecting the park that was in place at the time. The applicants want to reconfigure the main floor of their home, returning it closer to the original floor plan and making the existing space and functions more usable. This is a site plan of the property. North is over here on the left. The front porch is over here on the right. You see the sunroom. If you zoom in a little bit, you can see the pool and deck off here to the north. Along this southwest corner of the floor plan is a bathroom. This, I assume, was added on after 1880, when the house was built. I assume that because there are two windows here and that you typically don't see windows coming out of a bathroom of that age of a house. There's, on the east side, you have the stairwell going up to the second story. And then on the south side, you have the open porch. In the northwest corner here, you have the kitchen. Now we're flipped around a little bit. North is on the right-hand side. You've got the house. You can see the deck and enclosed pool room, the sunroom. This is the roof of the open porch. You know, the yard is very actively used, lots of gardening going on. You know, rainwater collection, native plantings. The short driveway is running north and south along the southeast corner of the property. Here would be the interior stairwell. Okay. They request the variance to replace the existing open porch with a building addition, which would add approximately 250 square feet of conditioned space. The addition itself would likely include a portion of the bathroom, which would be relocated from that southwest corner, which would open up the living room space to its original configuration. I would also, could likely add an enclosed vestibule for the main entrance and also then expand the living room out into that addition. I say could and likely because, you know, the floor plan has not been solidified. The variance request is strictly to allow the encroachment into the front yard for a conditioned space, not necessarily any specific floor plan. So here is the current floor plan. Again, the sunroom, the bathroom that's here, the stairwell up to the upstairs, and the open porch. There is an entrance from the house out onto the porch, as well as an entrance out east onto the driveway, and one into the sunroom, and one north to the deck. The concept plan currently, as I mentioned, would open up the living room to its full extent, relocate that bathroom possibly into the addition here. The living room would expand southward into the addition. And then an enclosed vestibule could be added that would allow people to come in, close the door, keep the weather out, and then go through another doorway into the house, keeping the elements out. As you can see, here are the required front yard setbacks. Here's the 25-foot setback, shows the open porch encroaching a bit into that. And it also shows a 13-foot setback required front yard along Lynn Street, because it's a corner lot, there's two front yards. The sunroom is built up to that required front yard setback. The applicants did consider other options for expanding the house on the main floor. The west side has already been expanded to its possible extent. The north side has the deck and enclosed pool. And the east side contains the stairwell to the upper floor and is adjacent to the driveway. According to the applicants, expanding to the south makes the most sense, using the footprint of the existing porch and restores the original floor plan of the home closer to what it had been. Section 113 of the zoning ordinance requires the board to make findings based on six variance criteria. The board must find, based on the evidence presented, that there are special circumstances or special practical difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance, and why, if granted, the variance will serve the public interest, or at least will not unreasonably hinder and impair the public interest. In addition to these two findings, the board must consider all six criteria that are discussed in the staff report. If the board should articulate their own findings, sorry, the board should articulate their own findings if they vary from staff findings. In this case, that means you need to make findings for the first two criteria because staff did not do that. Looking at those six criteria, the first is regarding the special circumstances or practical difficulties with reference to this parcel in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance. The applicants state that the special practical difficulty of this parcel is meeting the front yard requirement that was adopted decades after all of the buildings on this block face had been constructed, which also happened to make half of those buildings legally non-conforming. That's because the front yard is based on an average of the front yard setbacks of the houses on that block face. And by definition, an average would mean half of the houses would be shorter than that, and the other half would be larger than that. That doesn't make the houses illegal. It simply means that they could not be expanded into the front yard any further, or if they were damaged beyond a certain percentage, they would not be able to be rebuilt to their former location. Staff did note that previous decisions made by the applicants, adding the sunroom and adding the enclosed pool and deck to the north, lend to the current situation that expansion to the south is the best remaining option. So staff do not have a finding regarding this criterion. The second criterion is that the proposed variance would not serve as a special privilege because it's requested due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure involved, or to be used for occupancy thereof, which is not generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. As I mentioned, this lot is subject to the minimum front yard average of all front yards of the block face requirement that applies to all lots in the R3 zoning district. So this requirement applies to all of the lots in the R3 zoning district. A variant that kind of indicates that a variance would be a special privilege because everybody has to abide by this front yard setback average. The average setback of the eight buildings on this double block face is 26 feet, four and a half inches. That's more than 25 feet, so that simply means that the front yard required here in this block face is 25 feet. The applicants do state also that unlike many other blocks, this block face contains one house, one lot with a house located much further back than other houses on the block. And that if the house had been located closer to the street, like other houses on the block, the variance might not be required, or a smaller variance would have been required. So in the footnote, I talk about if the house had been located at 25 feet rather than 54 feet, the average front yard might have been 23 feet instead of 26 feet. A variance would still have been required. It might have been only two feet rather than five feet. If this had been a single block face instead of a double block face, where you count fewer houses towards that average, the average setback would have still been 23 feet, still requiring a one and a half foot variance. So there really isn't getting around the fact that a variance would likely have been required regardless of the location of that last outlier house. And I'm happy to go into this more, if you like. Their other contention is that these homes were all built prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance, which made four of the existing homes legally non-conforming because they were located closer to the street than the new zoning ordinance permitted. Three of the homes were built before 1900, three were built in 1904, and two were built in the 1940s. The first zoning ordinance was 1940, I believe. Again, because staff did not make a finding that there was a special circumstance or practical difficulty for this parcel, staff also do not have a finding regarding this criterion of special privilege to fix that same special practical difficulty or circumstance. So the third criterion is that the variance requested is not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The applicants purchased the property with the home in its current location, not knowingly realizing that the required front yard was actually as large as it was, 25 feet deep, nor knowing that it would prohibit expansion to the south, even onto the footprint of the existing porch. Staff again note that the applicants made additions to the home to the west and north, but staff don't believe that the applicants understood the ramifications this might have for future additions. So staff find this criterion met. The fourth criteria is that the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The proposed addition will create an enclosed living space on the footprint of the existing open porch, not changing its distance to the street, nor altering its contribution to the existing character of the neighborhood. The applicants state that this neighborhood's character is, quote, "houses closer to the street and the character and intimacy that this aspect brings with it. Houses and their public faces being closer to the street are simply more welcoming and inviting." Staff find this criterion met as well. The fifth criterion is that the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent properties. The proposed addition will not alter the overall form of the structure, merely serve to enclose an already existing outdoor living area. It would not create a nuisance at this time or in the future and would actually serve to isolate activities of residents from neighbors, decreasing the possibility of future nuisances. Staff find this criterion met as well. Finally, the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. The applicants are proposing the addition to accomplish the following goals: generally restoring the original floor plan with a usable living room, which requires relocating the bathroom to another location, and creating an enclosed entry vestibule. The area that the existing front porch occupies is enough to meet these goals, but a smaller variance would not be sufficient. So staff find this criterion met. Overall, staff find that four of the six criteria weigh in favor of granting the minor variance. Staff published a legal ad in the News Gazette 15 days prior to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We sent letters to 48 neighboring property owners and posted a public hearing sign on the property and have received no public input. Staff findings are that, first, the requested variance would remedy a situation not knowingly created by the applicants as they purchased the property with the house in its current location, not knowing that the required front yard would prohibit expansion to the south. Second, that the proposed addition would be consistent with the essential character of the neighborhood, a neighborhood of houses closer to the street and the character and intimacy that this aspect brings with it. Third, that the proposed addition would not create a nuisance as it would be no closer to the street than the existing front porch and would isolate residents' activities from the neighborhood and reducing the probability of a nuisance. Finally, that the requested variance is the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accomplish the desired goals of restoring the original floor plan of the home, keeping the bathroom, and creating a covered entry. Before I get into the final bits, I wanted to show some photographs or some screenshots of the area. So here is looking at the south block face of East Main Street. The subject property is up here. You can perhaps see, you know, the line of houses, the very, the outlier that doesn't even show up here. And then going further east, you can see the proximity of the houses and buildings to the street. Across the street, you can see, you know, secondhand rose here is approximately six feet back from the sidewalk. We've got 19 feet and 20 feet. We've got the park here, so no setbacks really. And then we've got 30 feet, 20 feet, and 21 feet. On Lynn Street, which is around the corner to the north, you've got, the setbacks are even closer. You know, they range from six feet, eight feet, 14 feet, four feet, five feet, six feet. Again, this is, you know, a lateral street off of Main Street. Heading the other way down South Lynn Street, similarly, you've got setbacks of four feet, seven feet, six feet. So this is, you know, supporting the applicant's contention that the neighborhood is, you know, one of houses and buildings set closer to the street. Doesn't necessarily change the rule of the average required front yard being the average of the houses on that block. In this case, you know, the porch is allowed to encroach into that front yard, but basically a building addition cannot. Finishing off. Here is, in the application, they submitted, you know, a drawing showing the various setbacks of the different buildings on the street. This property is, you know, 21 feet, 10 inches setback. Here's the 52-foot property. We've got 22, 24. We have a house here that's 17 feet back, and then a couple that are 22, and then at the corner, we've got one that's 27. We measure the setback from the property line to the front of the structure, whether that's a porch, or whether that's a house proper if there is no porch. Recommendation-wise, we do not have a recommendation regarding this request because we did not find it met the criteria of special circumstance or practical difficulty. Staff did find it met four of the six zoning criteria. There is no minimum threshold of number of criteria it has to meet. So ZBA should make findings for Criterion 1 and 2, and either accept staff findings for Criteria 3 through 6, or state their own. That is the end of my staff report. Adrian Kim is here to speak on behalf of Andrew Fell and Associates, the architects for the applicants. And the applicants, or the owners themselves are here, Simona and Alejandro. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Marcus?
Yeah.
I've got one, I think.
Okay.
Okay, criteria number one. You're not making a recommendation on that because they've already built these west and north additions. So if they were coming to you to build this, enclose this porch, prior to all that, you would recommend to them to build on the west and the north?
I personally, if, if those other additions had not been built, as, as a planner, I would have said, "I would recommend that you find the path of least resistance." The minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance would be either to build west or to build north because it doesn't require a variance, unless there was some other really good reason not to, like, there was a utility easement there and you're not allowed to build out that far. Or there was a huge lovely legacy tree there that you could cut down and build there, but, you know, because there's, there's nothing stopping you from cutting a tree down. But yes, I would have recommended, you know, going in a different direction. But that has sailed.
If we were like, let's say, over here on, say, High Street or one of these other streets, and somebody wanted to enclose their porch, we wouldn't really consider the rest of the, I guess, the square footage of the lot. I say, I don't understand why we're, it seems to me like you're punishing them for having already built west and north, I guess.
The zoning ordinance is written in such a way that it allows a porch to encroach into a front yard. So it doesn't necessarily look ahead to if somebody's like, "Oh, I like this location, I'll just enclose it." You can't do that. You are allowed to have a porch encroach into a front yard, but not the house. So I hate this, I don't want to say that we're setting ourselves up to create conflict. The allowance to encroach into a front yard could actually be seen as a leniency. An open porch isn't as much of a feeling like you're looming over somebody walking by, whereas walls and windows and doors feel more like you're on top of somebody. So I hate to say punishing, you know, again, if, if, if they'd happened to come to us or me individually back in 2017 and said, "I'm looking at doing these seven different things in the future. What should I do and how should I do it first?" I would probably look at it and say, "Okay, you want a bathroom? You want living room? You want these things?" You want living room? You want these things." Unfortunately, you can't go to the south because you're already, as far as you can go, you can't put a pool in front of the house. You could put a deck in front of the house. You couldn't put a sunroom in front of the house. So you might have to choose one or the other. But again, that boat has sailed. We could say, "Tear down the sunroom and build your living room that way." But again, you know, that is a pretty strong and aggressive sort of response, which is why we have the variance process. But the variance sets a very high bar. It says, "There has to be a real special circumstance for this here." And it's up to the applicants to explain what that is. And their contention is that this house was built in its configuration this close to the street decades before the zoning ordinance was written. Throw another option out. If this house had been built 30 feet back instead of 20 feet back, they would have been able to enclose their front porch without needing any variance. But it was built here before anybody ever knew that there was going to be zoning. So that's why it's up to you to make the decision.
So if we were going to, if we're going to, let's say, approve this, we would need to state that we feel that criteria number one is met? Simple as that, or we have to get into some long explanation?
Well, you could look at some of the comments that were written or the assertions that were written in the staff report, and you could say, "I believe that the special practical difficulty is X." Maybe one of the contentions that the applicants made. And that's really, that first one, I hate to say it's a minimum threshold, but the zoning ordinance does say that you have to find that there is a special circumstance. It doesn't technically go on to say you have to state what that is, but for the clarity of the public, if you can state what you think the special circumstance is, it would be best to do that.
I do have a question. Now, the stairs will come out from the front addition. And then, how close can the stairs be then to the sidewalk?
Right. Stairs?
Is that a problem?
No, I believe that in this case, what would happen, there's a clause. I have a handy zoning ordinance here.
Because then they have to come out farther.
So the question is, you know, are there going to need to be stairs coming off of this enclosed porch further into that required front yard? And so the question, or the answer is, "Access to buildings and outdoor living areas when consisting of uncovered stairways, stairway landings, and stoops which are at or below the plane of the ground floor of a building constructed prior to November 6th may encroach up to five feet into a required yard, but not within six inches of a property line." And then there is, that's subsection three. Subsection five says, "When replacing or upgrading an existing porch and/or stairs in the R3 district, the replacement porch and/or porch stairs may be constructed in the location of the existing porch and/or porch stairs, but no closer than six inches from every property line, measured from the closest part of the structure." The important part is, it goes on to say, "The porch stairs may further encroach the minimum amount required to bring the rise and run of the stairs up to current building code standards." So there's some allowance to allow the stairs to encroach further into the yard, no closer than six inches to the property line, which this isn't going to get anywhere near to to meet the minimum building code requirement.
Didn't you say that this was a request that asked for the minimum deviation from the zoning ordinance?
Yes, that's the last criteria.
Oh, okay.
Or the final criteria, yes. And so their contention is a smaller variance would not give them the space they need to put a sufficient enough area on the living room to relocate that bathroom there and/or to create that vestibule there.
But this is the minimal.
Pardon?
The minimal.
Yes.
Minor variance.
Right. So they talk about in the application, "We could have asked for, you know, 10 feet instead of just five feet to make the living room even bigger and the bathroom even bigger." We didn't ask for that. We asked for just five feet, which is the magnitude of the porch. Sometimes that minimum deviation is pretty gray and vague.
But it, one of the things--
Is your microphone on?
Oh. One of the things I've noticed over time is that there are so many of these houses that used to have open porches that are very close to the sidewalk. And all those porch, many of those porches have already been enclosed.
Yes, yes.
Legally, and not, nobody paid any attention, and they just did it. So it's a very, this is a very common way that houses look.
I agree. You're right.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. And now, if the applicants would like to make a statement, Okay, we need you all to sign in. And then all of you, please state your name. And then you can have it, take it from there.
And please make sure you speak into the microphone.
I'm Adrian Kim, and I work for Andrew Fell's office. He was going to be here tonight, but he couldn't make it, so I'm filling in. So I'm here to just answer some questions along with the building owners.
Do you wish to make a statement?
No, but do you?
Thank you for considering our request.
Excuse me, but just please state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Alejandro Yerus Buetti, and I co-own this house with my wife, Simona. Just wanted to thank you for considering this request. We were honestly just surprised that we had to have a variance request when we got thinking about this project. And there, if you saw the image of their neighborhood on the Lynn Street, North and South, and a lot of the houses on our street, across the street, et cetera, they were closer to the, to the, to the, to the street. And as you mentioned, a lot of houses have enclosed porches. So when we came and asked for just permission to go ahead, they were mentioned, "Actually, you have a variance, like, for a couple of feet and like, for a few feet." And we were just surprised. So we're just trying to follow the rules. And the special circumstances are that we had no idea that this was even something that we had to consider. I'm sorry about it. We have tried to take care of our property and make things to improve the property slowly, the houses. We've improved and grown our family. We, we're a family of four with three more kids from a previous marriage that also come and stay with us. So it's a, it's a big family, relatively small house. And so we, I don't know how that qualifies as special circumstance for the house, but it's definitely one of the issues that we have.
Yeah, I'm Simona Yerus Buetti, so I'm the wife. Yes, so we currently have a bathroom downstairs that is not fully used because we don't have a vestibule. So the bathroom is currently, the shower actually has been relocated as the coat hanger and where we keep our shoes. We are sometimes southern. And indeed, one of our dreams is to have just a place to, where we can enter the house and have like a place to just hang our stuff and leave the shoes and stuff. It's true. Like, you're laughing, but it's true. Like, because we, our current living room, so one of the ideas of Andrew was like to, the current living room is actually on the area where the, beyond the new vestibule. So it's like a very small area where we have a couch for us. And the current entrance does not allow to actually receive, like, all of the stuff as we get in. So that is one of the improvements, actually, of the project, is that it would allow to have an entrance with an, so where we can drop the stuff, have like the bathroom. With a working shower for all of us. Our kids are currently nine, 10, you know, 13, 16, and older. And yeah, so having like a functional bathroom, a shower, would clearly benefit everyone. Add a little bit of the wavy content, you know. But as Alejandro said, and as Marcus said also, we didn't think about it. So when we initially added, you know, we made some additions to thinking about the functionality. We didn't think about expanding the living room. I think only now that we have, like, the kids growing up and all of it, that we realized that maybe having a second functional bathroom and having more space where we can all sit down actually would benefit our family.
The last thing I want to say is that the floor plan of this house and the first floor is kind of weird. When we first moved in, it had four doors, so every, it's a, it's a historical house. It had four doors, one on each wall. One to the north, one to the west, one to the east, and one to the south, which creates a little bit of usability. It's a lot of walkways through the house. So our current living room has a door that we have to block. We just put a table in front of it because we just can't use it. Because if we use that door, all of a sudden, our living room is the entryway. It's just not very usable. So we have, that, that, that floor plan is unfortunately not very usable. And because the previous owner added a bathroom to, in the space that used to be or probably was the living room, then that's not big enough for a living room. And to the north, we had the dining room and the kitchen. So I don't know. Anyway, it's just, it's a complicated floor plan as it is.
Do we have any questions? Well, since that's everybody in the audience, there are no proponents. There are no opponents. Don't think we need rebuttal since nobody's asked a question. Guess we're down to discussing the case. Do we have more questions for staff? Or do you want to discuss this? Seems if we are in favor of improving this, we have to solve problems, criteria one and two.
I can, I'm ready to make a motion that we could discuss if you want me to make a motion for us to discuss. Yeah, I believe I am, yes.
Sure.
Okay. I move in the case of, I move to approve the proposed minor variance in the case ZBA-2024-Min-02, with the condition that the, that the additions mentioned follow the narrative outlined in the general variance request of Exhibit D. The new addition may not exceed the floor space of the existing structure by any more than 10%. The reasoning is that this case has a special practical difficulty because the front yard requirements are, were established decades after the house was constructed. There are no other directions to build since other additions have been made to ensure the house would keep up with modern usage standards. And this would not be a special privilege because there are already many non-conforming closed porches in the neighborhood. And the proposed addition would not be substantially different or detract from the character of the neighborhood. And I also accept the staff findings on criterions three through six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nancy. Discussion, does that cover your one and two?
I think that's perfectly sufficient. And if you can, if you happen to type that up and can provide it, Terry, I'm sure would be very appreciative.
All right, any other discussion here? Okay, seen then, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brish?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
That passes four to nothing. And so it's a minor variance, so that's, that's that.
That is the end of this case.
Okay, very good. Now, give me a second here. Do we have any more new business?
No more new business.
And we have no audience participation. A staff report?
I don't have a prepared staff report, but I did want to share with you that if you happen to drive down Main Street, you will see a duplex almost completed there on the north side. It's probably, it was one that we did a duplex conditional use permit for with a bunch of variances a few months ago, also for Andrew Fell. And it's coming along. It's up the block from the New Canaan Missionary Baptist Church. It's light blue colored, yes. So you can see some of your handiwork in action.
Okay, can I ask you a few questions then here?
Sure.
Okay, I'm concerned about, number one, the challenge on the ZBA 2023 CO5, the warehouses out on High Cross Road. Is that in, is that a court case? What is being done with that?
I am not familiar with the status of that. Terry, do you know? Okay, what I understand, which is very little, well, first, I would suggest that you talk with Kevin Garcia, the principal planner. I know that they received, you know, requests to show up for things. But I'm not real, there was, there is or was a case that I think is currently in litigation.
See, what I'm getting to with what I'm going to say here is, it seems to me that we need an update, whether the update is simply, "This is in litigation, we can't talk about it." And then that takes me to like the planning commission on March 7th, when, two days before, I find out that the staff has recommended that that particular lot out on High Cross Road be down, or I guess upgraded from a B3 to a B1
Right.
in the future, which involves this particular case.
Right.
And once again, we had had, we must have had two or three meetings where there was no mention of that to this board, to which I think everybody should have had an opinion on that. And then the other thing that they said, another staff recommendation, was that the conditional use permit procedure be taken away from the zoning board and given to the city council. And that to me--
To clarify, just to simply take out self-storage facilities as a conditional use that's possible in that zoning district. So yes, taking away the opportunity of the ZBA to, you know, potentially grant a conditional use permit, yes.
Well, the way I was--
Because it doesn't, it doesn't make it a special use permit. It doesn't go to plan commission and city council. It just removes it as an option completely.
For us?
Yes.
Every conditional use would go to the city council directly?
No, no. It doesn't take away where you can, it doesn't shift your authority to plan commission and city council. It simply takes away one of the zoning districts that it can be a conditional use permit in. It doesn't give it to plan commission-- conditional use permit in, it doesn't give it to plan commission and city council to vote on. It's still a conditional use permit, which means ZBA, but it takes it out of one of the districts that it used to be able to be granted in.
So it only applies to self-storage? That's what you're saying?
I'm going to have to go back and look at that meeting again because I, I, oh, okay.
I, I think I can really quickly maybe clarify it by going to the table of uses.
Well, this, this was a whole new ordinance that was proposed.
Right. The, the ordinance though is to modify the zoning ordinance.
This was, it was tabled, wasn't it?
Yes.
And, and so is it still tabled?
Yes.
And then?
Well, I think, you know, as we discussed, the comprehensive plan and where different types and groups of uses are desired to be seen in different areas of the city, that might then get reflected in a change to the zoning ordinance, you know, what uses are allowed where. Again, the comprehensive plan is simply a vision and guiding document, whereas the zoning ordinance is the actual regulatory thing. So real quick, self-storage facility, all right, self-storage facilities are currently a conditional use in the B3 general business zoning district, and they're a permitted use in the industrial one and industrial two zoning districts. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment was to take away that conditional use option for B3 zoning districts, which means you could still do them by right in industrial districts. You don't go to plan commission or to city council for that, they're allowed by right. It simply takes away the option to an applicant to have it in a general business district. So yes, it takes away ZBA's authority to grant a conditional use permit to do a facility in the general business zoning district, but it isn't transferring that authority to somebody else.
Well, because nobody else, there'll never be a case.
Right, right.
Because it has to be in an industrial thing.
Right, permitted by right in an industrial district.
And to me, that's, I don't, you know, however one feels about the case on High Cross Road, the reason, nobody had done anything there for, what, 25 years or how many ever years, it's like, that situation will come up again, I would think, in a B3 somewhere, but...
So it, if I can, if I can attempt to interpret what it is that you were saying, it sounds like what you were saying was that because the conditional use permit was granted by ZBA and be, for that particular case, and because it was for a property that as B3 allowed self-storage facilities as a conditional use, and the rezoning was going to also take that ability away, which was something that ZBA granted, those proposed changes, the downzoning from B3 to B1, and the zoning ordinance amendment to take away the option for ZBA to grant conditional use permits, both of those involve ZBA, and you would have appreciated a staff report or a presentation or something saying, hey, this is going to affect you as a board. How do you feel about that? Is that...
Yes, I mean, I think any, anything that's going to affect the ZBA can be in your report, what you can tell us, you know? But I, I mean, I see people on the street that tell me things that like, you know, and there's obviously been no activity out there, where the Colorado thing is already gung ho going out here, so, and to me, the other thing was, is that it's, you know, we're citizens here, we're not politicians. City councils politicians, and I'm pretty darn sure that the politicians got to you guys to do this and to down, and to downzone it to B1. And I just think that that's something that we should know so we, if we have an opinion of it, you know?
I, I appreciate, I appreciate getting to hash it out now to get the full details. I, yeah, I, having that, having that in the report for us would be great, like if you give us like an update at the beginning of the meeting. Yeah, to like, to sort of update on that, it's just like you just did now at the end when you told us about the condos, like that'd be awesome if you could include tidbits like that in the future, definitely appreciate that. I, I personally feel that we don't necessarily need to have an opinion on it as a board, like we should talk to our city councilors and tell them like, hey, this is your charge, go deal with it. But I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the fact that while there were, you know, like issues along the way, we did our function, we served as a board, we made decisions, and then it goes to the rest, the other boards for them to make their decisions, and that's the way the process works. We have multiple eyes that can look at this. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, but I, I do still get an email on occasion, like, hey, could you do something about this? I can say like, you know what, we, we had looked at it, but it's now out of our hands, so talk to the city councilor, some, another board, because we can't do anything more about it.
So, question, what is that area by Har, High Cross Road? What is permitted to be? Is it still?
It's in the courts. If, if, am I right, if the city wins the court case, there's going to be storage units there?
So, um...
If the city wins?
Notwithstanding like how the court result happens, because I'm assuming a judge could, you know, revoke or, or delete that conditional use permit, but if that court course, court case didn't have some other result, the conditional use permit has been granted, it is good for a period of one year, which I'm not sure when the date was, and after that, it expires. If a building permit is issued before that expiration date and it gets built, then that self-storage facility can continue to operate, it would be considered a legally non-conforming facility, which simply means that it can't be expanded, and if it was destroyed beyond 50%, it couldn't be rebuilt. So it doesn't necessarily negate the decision that ZBA made, it just makes it potentially less likely that somebody's going to actually do it because they know that if it burns down, you know, they can't replace it.
All right, thank you. Is there a study session?
No study session.
And simply the bylaws we're waiting for the lawyers to do?
We have a new lawyer.
We have, I think his name is Matt Ruschley? Yes, and he was appointed the Monday before last, I think he starts on July 8th or something like that.
So David Wesner is, he's...
I think there will be a transition period to, you know, onboard.
I was going to say, he was at the city council meeting there Tuesday night.
And he's, he's a contracted, you know, person, and so Matt will be, you know, an actual city employee. I believe so, yeah.
Okay, well, if there isn't anything else, this meeting is adjourned at 8:05. Thank you.
Thank you.